Good evening. I would like to call the December 10, 2018 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
And Mayor Baird?
Here. Formal approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes, of November 26, 2018. Does any member on council have any corrections, additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
No mayor.
None mayor.
Seeing none, approved as written. Mayor's announcement, special guests. We have a number of special guests this evening. We have our three Green County Commissioners here this evening, and they are going to present the city of Belbrook, I believe, a check. Mr. Coogler, Commissioner Coogler, please come up.
It is my pleasure to be here this evening, along with the other two Commissioners, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Glazer. We're here this evening to present you with a check. The three Commissioners, after a period of time and debate, we came up with an opportunity for the, all the political subdivisions to share in a half million dollars, which the Commissioners felt that we wanted to push back in the community. The Commissioners right now, we are fortunate enough to have a $26 million cash carryover on a $50 million budget. And as a result of that, we wanted to be able to take a part of that money, a portion of that money, and put it back into the political subdivision so that they could spend it on projects and situations that they thought was most appropriate for their particular community. So, there's no strings attached. All we ask is that you tell us at the end of the year, at some point in time, how you spent that money. It's going to be important that we know that this money was spent in a way that there's a return on investment. Because next year, we're going to be looking at that to see, is this beneficial? Should we increase it? Should we do the same? And assuming that the county is still in a good financial position, that we can do this, we'd like to share those dollars if, whenever possible. So, it's our pleasure that we're going to be presenting this check for over $11,000 today. And with that, I'd like to ask Allen Anderson to come up and say a few words also.
Thank you all. It is a great pleasure to be here tonight and to be able to give a little bit of money towards the cause. We know that it's not enough to meet all the needs you have, but hopefully, it'll be some grant money, or some match money for a grant. And I also, I was talking to a couple of the gentlemen, that you do need to become acquainted with Paul Newman in our Department of Development. And I know there's a lot of opportunity here in Belbrook that you have in mind and ways to develop, especially with your downtown and other things, which this money is certainly available for. As Tom said, there's no strings on it. You can spend it as you see fit. Like, the county has, is fortunate enough, the economy has come back, and we have got our various accounts funded. And we know that with the shortage of local government funds, or the cutting out of local government funds, that the local jurisdictions don't have quite the, especially Belbrook, and when you don't have an income tax, doesn't have the ability to raise the funds easily. So, we decided to do this on a per capita basis, and without any application or anything like that, just for you folks to use here in the city. And I'm sure it'll be well spent. So, thank you for what you do for the community, and we're glad to be here.
Any questions on council, and then we'll all come down?
Well, we've got Bob Glazer. You've got, we've got the most important, Bob Glazer is here to put his two cents.
We have a pecky in order here.
Is that Tyler just shorted us?
We just.
Sorry, Bob.
We have just basically, pretty much everything has been said about this. But what we're trying to do is take some of the money that we have and eat into our carryover, as we think it can be eaten into, and try to distribute it throughout the county and to the different jurisdictions. And we're anxious, really, to see what they do with the money. Because if they do positive things, which we think they will, and try to leverage the money with some kind of grants or something like that, we think that that's a very positive thing. And as we go forward, that gives us incentive to take and continue to do this program. And that's what we're, this is sort of a trial balloon. We're looking to see what, if we give money to the various jurisdictions throughout Green County, what are they going to do with the money? Will they try to leverage it with grants? Will they just spend it? What will they spend it on? That's why we asked for a report back. And that's going to be very important. So, my best advice is, make good use of the money, and then tell us how good of a use you made of it. That gives us a lot of motivation to spread some more money around. And we intend to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we can have you come down here for a photo op. Can you come down for a photo op?
We'll all go down, and I'll stay away from the tall guys.
We're standing back.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Get your own check, Bob.
Hey, guy, get in here. Do you like it? Come on. Squeeze in here up there.
Yep.
We've got a couple cameras, so come here with me here. Here, busting shots. Show me the money.
Show me the money. All right.
Another one with this one.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm here for a hundred and fifty. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give it to the finance director.
Thank you very much.
Finance Director's got it.
Finance Director has the most important part. That's the real check.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate it very much. I hope the program is a success throughout the county, and hopefully you guys will be able to do this again. Hopefully, maybe a little more money next year.
We want to double it. So, keep up the effort. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, six, to our public hearing of ordinances this evening. We have three. We'll first start with 2018-6. Mr. Schweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-6. An ordinance approving appropriations in the city of Belbrook for fiscal year ending December 31, 2019. Whereas the city councils reviewed the proposed 2019 annual budget, and whereas the city of Belbrook desires to adopt the 2019 annual budget and authorize the related appropriations, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Belbrook during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019. The following items being there hereby set aside to be appropriate as follows. The amounts are $3,721,940 for personal services, other expenses of $2,491,736, and transfers of $350,000 for a grand total 2019 appropriation, $6,563,677. Section 2, that the Finance Directors hereby authorized to make payments for many of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper documentation approved by the officers, authorized by the law to prove the same. In Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. This is, in fact, our 2019 budget. I think we just heard the Commissioners say the county runs on roughly $50 million, and we're running on 6.5 million. And I guess we have a presentation to follow.
Yes. So, technology is on my side this evening. So, we have the 2019 budget presentation. There's a print version in front of everyone, and there's also the same presentation up here on PowerPoint. So, we're going to go very similar format as what has been presented in the past. That's kind of the approach that I've taken with the budget all along as I get acclimated to the city and to the budget itself. So, what you see here is a budget summary of all funds. Our estimated beginning balance of all funds is $5,269,74. And then it shows our budgeted income and expenses. So, total revenue across all funds, $6,588,488. And then our budgeted expenses, which ties to the ordinance before council tonight, which is $6,563,677. So, that's a net difference, adding to our reserves across all funds of $24 million, or I'm sorry, $24,811. So, that will bring our estimated ending balance at the end of 2019 to $5,293,885. So, that's, 13 total funds make up all of our budget. So, we've got eight funds that are set to add to our reserves or break even. There was one that was breaking even, so the other seven were adding to reserves. And then there were five that will deficit spend, which were police, fire, capital improvement, streets, and waste, which we'll get into. Overall, it's a balanced budget, though. So, you've got some that are adding to reserves, some that are spending into reserves a little bit. So, overall, it's a pretty balanced budget. Okay, so, we take a look next at our property tax-supported funds. So, this is our general fund, our police, fire, and capital improvement funds. So, it shows our beginning estimated balance at $2,562,374. So, we've got revenues coming across those four funds of $4,297,460. And then our expenses just slightly higher at $4,332,116. So, that net difference is taking, eating into our reserves by $34,656, which, again, is a pretty balanced budget. When you're dealing with that much money, to have a net difference of $34,000, it's pretty insignificant, and that could, that could be a month going into the year. So, our general fund is set to add $288,000 to reserves, and that's mostly due to the fire levy passing. So, that really is helping to add, add reserves to our general fund, because the fire fund is a little more self-supporting. So, our capital improvement fund is going to deficit spend by $214,000, which isn't uncommon, because that's been built up quite a bit. So, police and fire are going to deficit spend just minimally. It's, those are both pretty balanced budgets at the end of the day, though. So, that net difference is $34,000. So, if we look at our transportation-related funds, again, these are really balanced budgets. What this includes is our streets, our permissive tax, and our state highway funds. So, there's three funds there. Streets are going to deficit spend by about $19,000, but again, that's not much at all. Our permissive tax fund, on the other hand, are going to add $25,000 to reserves. So, at the end of the day, that equates out to that net difference of that positive amount of $62,45. So, and there's a zero missing off of the, there's a, well, actually, there's a five missing off of that. So, that estimated ending balance, there was something that got deleted in there. So, that should be about $385,000 is going to be our estimated ending balance. And we started with $79,000 on that. We're going to go to our waste collection fund. So, our waste collection fund has an estimated beginning balance of just under $170,000. Our income is set to be $448,000 and some change, and our expenses are set to be about $466,000. So, that's a net difference of deficit spending of about, almost $18,000. So, what we did with the waste collection fund is, we did add an increase of a dollar a month per customer to our trash collection fees. And that would take our monthly cost to the customer up to $14 versus $13. So, what I'm attempting to do with this is, those reserves kind of built up over time. Our waste collection fees were as high as $16 a month for customers, and then they came down to where they were, which is $13 a month. And so, it ate into the reserve, but now we're to a point where we really need to start to stabilize that. So, we are increasing that a dollar per month per customer for our waste collection fund. Okay, and if we take a look next is our water fund. Our water fund has an estimated beginning balance of 20, for 2019, of $2,127,773. Our income is set to be about $1.4 million, and our estimated expenses are just, just short of that, $1.3 million. So, that net difference is a positive amount of $60,432. So, that would be added to reserves, and that would make our estimated ending balance $2,188,205. So, there is no water rate increase for 2019. So, this is something that we'll continue to keep an eye on. One of the biggest things with this is that we've got a new Service Director, and in the capital discussions, he had identified some well improvements and things that needed to be done. And I see that possibly continuing on, just a different set of eyes on our system. He may have some different recommendations and some repairs and improvements to come. So, it's just something that we'll continue to keep an eye on, but no rate increases for 2019. So, then, the next, the next few slides are a few different charts, which just kind of give folks an understanding of our budget from a number of different aspects. So, this slide is our total revenue by source. So, our total revenue across all funds is $6,238,488. Fifty percent of that is property taxes, 32% are charges for service, which are our water and our waste collection fees that we get from customers. And then the rest of those are all very minimal, intergovernmental, at 14%. And the rest are very, very small amounts that come in from our fines, fees, and permits, investment earnings miscellaneous, special assessments didn't even equate to a full 1%. So, this kind of shows where our money actually comes from, that we take in across all funds. This is another graphic that council has seen a number of times. This changes every year ever so slightly, fractions of a percent. So, this actually shows how a property tax dollar is broken up. The majority, 54.5% going to the school district, 22.6% coming to the city, help district taking 17.5%, Green County JVS taking 3.3%, and then the park district taking 2.1%. So, this is based on our 2017 residential effective tax rates, which were collected in 2018. The 2018 rates are still not certified from all the different levies and everything. So, that should be happening in the next couple of weeks, but we did not get that in time for the presentation tonight. So, the next, the next graphic is something that I created, which is the property tax distribution. So, this shows what the taxes are based on a $100,000 home, which is just a nice, easy number for people. It shows what those, what those costs were in 2017 versus 2018. And it's a difference, actually a decrease of $141 across all of those. So, the effective millages went down across all of the different jurisdictions, just ever so slightly. So, it's actually a $31 savings for, for a homeowner on a $100,000 home that actually is coming to the city of Belbrook. So, as the tax base increases, the city's only going to accept or bring in a certain amount of revenue that stays level at all times. So, sometimes those adjust based on the tax base. So, it's actually a bit of a decrease for folks.
And that's based upon the new development we've had in the, in the city, and then the part that we collect. If we ever pass new, if we ever pass replacements to get back to the current millage, it would make up that difference. So, that's, that's the difference between when you have new development diversifies the tax load, or liability.
So, the next slide is something else that always came in front of council. And I think that the comparison of 2012 to current costs is, is interesting, because six years have passed, and actually, the change that, in revenue, that comes from the customer in property taxes, water fees, and waste fees, is actually a decrease of $74. And this was based on a $150,000 home value. So, a different home value, just kind of showing just, just how, how much savings have happened in a number of different directions. Let's see. So, the 2019 budget breakdown, so this is excluding our transfers, which were $350,000, because you don't want to count those twice. So, if we take a look at our budget breakdown across all of the categories, this is $6,213,677. And each of our funds, for the most part, have all of these same categories. So, if you take a look at the breakdown of these categories, our wages and compensation continue to be the highest percentage of expenditures at 45%. And contract services are second at 23%. Our benefits for our personnel services at 15%. And then everything else is, is a much smaller percentage. Our capital outlay is only 10% of our total, total budget amount for 2019, which is pretty minimal. So, then if we take a look at our operating expenses by function, our operating costs are $5,438,705. So, this does not include any capital expenditures. This is just our straight operations cost, personnel services, contract services, supplies, things like that. So, police is our biggest area at 33%, fire at 23%, water at 20%. And then everything else is, is below 10%, which is general, general fund service, waste, and then other. Let's postpone this. So, we're going to take a look next at our year-end fund balances. So, across our property tax-supported funds, this shows a historical perspective from 2011 up through a forecast of 2024. So, as you take a look, it's, it's a slight dip down into our fund balances. 2021 saw a, saw a significant decrease with our capital fund expenditures that were projected out. So, that's why you see a little bit of a leveling off before it goes back down again, because our capital expenditures were much higher in 2020 versus 2021, and then they kind of level off a little bit. So, this is, it's nothing to be concerning right now in any regard, but it is something that we want to take a look at, because that trajectory is on the downward. So, but again, it's a projection. Those things can change year to year, month to month, honestly, depending on how, how, how things go. So...
But it is a projection of what you expect to happen, right? I mean, you kind of said, this is what we expect to spend in the next couple of years in capital, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and our revenue is fixed, so you're going to have whatever 2% to 3% inflation on costs built in, and with the, so you're going to see...
Revenue is stable and expenses keep going up.
Unless we replace the tax levy to get that setback that we talked about, and then, which we don't want to do, so.
So, then the next one is, we're going to take a look at our year-end fund balance for our water fund. Again, this, this fund is relatively healthy, and reserves have continued to increase over the last several years, especially since 2011. And that is set to, set to happen again in 2019 by $60,000. Last water rate increase was in 2011, and you see that that was, needed to kind of happen, because everything was relatively stable for the most part with, with reserves under $1 million. So, that was definitely a necessary increase that happened. But there is no increase projected for 2019. So, another, another thing that we're going to keep a look at, an eye on, again, with a new Service Director starting and just a different set of eyes on the water system, different approach, I'm not sure exactly what he may have in store for the future. We know what he has as of right now planned. But as he gets some more tenure underneath of his belt, then I see that some, some improvements could possibly come with new eyes on those.
Also, as far as like water goes, I mean, if there is some kind of a major event of some kind, it's usually pretty expensive. So...
Yes.
We want to keep some reserves just in case, if we need to do something major to the water system.
Exactly. And just like the, the water main replacement that happened to Upper Hillside, you'll see later on in my report, but that project is now closed out, and that was a $1.3 million project. So, it's really expensive to replace water mains. So, as we have aging infrastructure, as does everybody across, you know, the United States, there's going to be different areas that are going to be identified in future years that are going to need to be replaced, and it's, it's pretty expensive to do those things. So, it looks like it's doing great, but you know, you make a couple of larger repairs, and that's totally gone. So...
Yeah.
Something to keep an eye on, for sure. So, this goes right into our capital improvement program. So, our capital budget for 2019 is $638,830. So, of that, we've got $474,000 and some change coming out of the capital improvement fund, and then our water fund only $164,550. So, the slides to follow are the detail behind that. I broke this down into major areas. So, administration, we've got about $93,000 worth of upgrades that are going to have to occur as a result of our IT assessment that was done and presented to council. We've got a number of workstations, server, phone, fiber upgrades, things like that. This, this can probably be shifted a little bit to have water cover some of this. That was not done. I had full intention of doing that, and I, it actually slipped me. So, this will actually get split a little bit more between our capital improvement fund and then our water fund, once we get closer to the time where we're going to be actually making these upgrades. For service, we've got our annual street repair budget at $150,000. I got a tentative list from our Service Director just today. Firebird, Dane Lane, Dane Court, and Kim Court are all set to be milled and overlaid. Based on current projections, that's going to be about $90,000 worth of the budget. So, there's still about $60,000 left to identify some other areas. He said that there's a couple others that are on his radar, but he's just kind of holding to see which ones might be in more urgent need of repair than others. Because obviously, the winter with the freezing, thawing, salting, plowing, that can all affect things quite a bit. But those five, those five streets are the ones that were identified as definitely going this year. So, as it stands. There's downtown improvement set for $5,000. We've got 35% of the cost shared with water for a two-and-a-half-ton dump truck for $56,000, which brings services allocation for capital improvements to $211,000 for 2019. The next that we have is police. This is a relatively small amount of money for what they need. No vehicles or anything like that this year. They're going to update and remodel the, kind of the old dispatch area where Cindy sits down front. There's, there's a number of upgrades that need to be made to kind of make that more accommodating for its use now versus, you know, what it was being used for. So, $10,300 earmarked for that. There's some shotgun lighting, which is very minimal. So, $12,400 earmarked for the police department.
Can we look to change that wording shotgun? Take, take that out of there, make it, make it less adversarial, potentially?
Yes, I can do that.
You do it like cruiser equipment or something?
Okay.
Yeah.
What is shotgun lighting?
We've got fire next. Fire Station Number Two has two different improvements that need to be made. Sleeping quarters to accommodate the extra firefighter medic that was hired as a result of the levy. Currently, they only have room to sleep three, and they need to sleep four. So, there's going to be some modifications to Fire Station Number Two as a result. Parking lot improvements are earmarked at $25,000. There is a command staff vehicle in for $40,000. There's also a self-contained breathing apparatus for $40,000, and then portable and mobile radios at $3,000. So, that's $158,000 total for fire. And water, we've got the annual fire hydrant replacement program at $30,000, a furnace for the garage at $8,000. Well improvements, which were some things that the new Service Director had indicated during budget talks, at $10,650, that weren't on previous capital budgets that had been seen by council. And then we've got the other 65% of the two-and-a-half-ton dump truck, which is coming out of water at $104,000. Then we've got... Well improvements, which were some things that the new service director had indicated during budget talks, at ten thousand, six hundred and fifty, that weren't on previous capital budgets that had been seen by council. And then we've got the other sixty-five percent of the two-and-a-half-ton dump truck, which is coming out of water at a hundred and four thousand. Then we've got some chlorinators, about three thousand, and then trench box, which was my recommendation for them, at nine thousand dollars. So we've got a hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dedicated to water for capital improvements. So that's pretty much the budget presentation. That's all of the high points. If I missed anything, let me know, and I can try my best to address those.
So I guess first questions on council. We did meet two different work sessions to go over pretty much all the line items in this. So I know we all know it pretty well, but does anyone on council have any questions for our city manager?
The only thing I have is during some of the meetings, some of the improvements and stuff that we want to do, do you have a thing in place to make sure that when you go out for bids, that those things are done? It seems like some people needed some help, or they were having trouble getting things estimated and things like that.
Well, I know that my practice is always to get three quotes. So I know that it's really easy to kind of just go with a contractor or company or vendor that you're used to, and you know, some things that are specialty, you might be very limited. But you know, kind of like the improvements to fire station number two, that's absolutely, both of those projects are absolutely something that we could have a number of different contractors come out and look at. So you know, we might not always go with the lowest, but lowest and best, absolutely. So that's definitely something. We're going to have a purchasing meeting tomorrow morning with all of the staff, and that's one of the things that I really want to talk about, is the fact that it's really important to me to make sure that everybody has three quotes for any kind of a major project, anything over three thousand dollars. I'd like for them to be able to, at least be able to compare. So that's one of my charges for them.
Okay, thanks.
Three thousand, over three thousand, over thirty thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Do you have any ideas yet of what to do with the money that they just gave us tonight?
That's definitely conversation for council. I know that I have a number of ideas. So just making sure that we're all on the same page, I would love for it to go towards something that has to do with downtown.
Me too.
And you know, leveraging that with grant money. CDBG funds are going to be coming around again, so a lot of the CDBG funds could be used towards downtown-type improvements. So that's one of the things that I would like to see, is it go for downtown improvements, especially since that's never been something that's ever had money set aside for before. This is a good way to do that and kind of see what kind of a return that we're able to get from that without dipping into the city's finances.
And I think we'll have to wait to see what our comprehensive plan turns out, too. And to have, yeah, to see how that all plans out and we can go through. I think it will be important for us to demonstrate that we have spent the money on something worthwhile.
Listen, just a couple comments on the budget. First off, I want to thank you and city staff for getting it done. I know we always passed it as emergency appropriations years ago, and now we've been in the mode, last probably four or five years, that we've passed it every year in December, which is kind of when it should be, and I think we're, takes a little bit of effort to get there, and I'm glad to see that staff still does it that way and that we've stayed the course. You know, secondly, compared to last year, we're roughly the same in the numbers and line items. I think the capital differs a little bit, but anytime you get a net difference from the twenty-four thousand dollars without income tax, and again, we're faced with fixed revenues and rising costs, I think that's a pretty good effort to get it balanced. And finally, I don't know if you wanted to make a comment about some of the different funds, because we always see the big balance in the water fund, and a lot of folks, I don't think really understand that the water fund can only be used for water projects. The general fund can be used for anything, but some of the funds are very specific. If we have money in excess in police, it stays in police. In fire, it stays in fire, and in water, it stays in water. And that's why we're building the big balance to make sure we're covered in water, because it's not only our assessment of needs and improvements, but it could also be an outside source coming in and saying, we need to change chlorination, need to do this, like the EPA or something like that, and we've got to stand to be able to respond to that stuff very quickly. I don't know if you wanted to add anything about that or not, but it's just important that everybody realize that the balances aren't all, you know, interchangeable and commingable.
The only fund that we have that is considered unrestricted is our general fund. So that is the only one that we can transfer out, and you'll see, we've got a resolution coming up. The only resolution tonight is transfers. So general fund is able to support out, or transfer out to support other funds that are in need. The water fund, though, you're right, that money is brought in for water fees, and it's only to be used for that. The only way that that could ever be used for anything else is if you had a court order, and that's not really something that anybody ever does. So that's something that you want to make sure that you keep that money there for water. And I think that, you know, we have been creative in terms of allocating percentages, kind of like that dump truck, where water paid for part and streets paid for part because they're both using it. So police and fire, we actually have property tax levies that are strictly devoted to those. So those are considered special revenue funds that are only supposed to go to those things. So that money that is going towards that purpose has to stay in that purpose.
Very good, thanks.
Any other questions on council, comments? Seeing none, then, this is a public hearing. Does anyone else on council have anything else to say this evening? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so it is open to our vast audience this evening. Seeing no one coming forward, I will call this public hearing close. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash six?
I'd like to motion we approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Your first test of the night.
There's a motion by Mr. Schwalter to approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen six, an ordinance approving the appropriations of the city of Belburg for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Schwalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, before we move any further, I would like to welcome Pam to her first city council meeting. Pam is our new clerk of council, so this is her first night performing this task, and she's doing a great job. So welcome aboard, and I'm sure Mrs. Dodd over here is very happy to have someone step in, so.
She's done great. Very good.
So with that, we will move on to our public hearing ordinance, two thousand and eighteen dash eight. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash eight, an ordinance amending chapter ten sixty of the Belburg municipal code to increase rates charged for refuse collection. Whereas the city of Belburg currently charges residents thirteen dollars per month for normal refuse collection, and whereas the city of Belburg has completed a review of current and future expenditures related to the waste collection fund, and whereas the city of Belburg Waste Collection Fund has been operating at a deficit and decreasing reserves, and whereas the city of Belburg wishes to bring revenues in line with expenditures and must increase rates in order to do so, and whereas chapter ten sixty of the Belburg municipal code needs to be amended in order to increase rates by one dollar per customer to fourteen dollars per month. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby ordains, section one, that the following amendment to chapter ten sixty of the Belburg municipal code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-through and additions shown by italics and underlined. Ten sixty point of is hereby amended, and then it shows the strike-throughs and the changes basically going from thirteen to fourteen dollars. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
And I think we've talked about this numerous times this evening. Just for the record, this is essentially a capta fund. We have a contract, and this is to supply this service to our people, and that contract was the cause of having a balance at one time, that balance was utilized, and now we need to start making up that balance to be able to pay the actual amount. So there is no increases, and our trash rates are still very, very, very competitive compared to about any city out there. This is a public hearing. Any questions or comments on council?
I think trash is still a bargain.
Well, I think it's still a bargain, and I just got a new washer and dryer, and I've got to get rid of the old ones. Well, you call up and put them out on the curb, and they come get your old washers and dryers. So it's well worth it just for that, especially at fourteen dollars a month compared to almost every other city that has trash and recycling pickup. This is a public hearing. Once again, if anyone in our audience would like to come up? Seeing none, I will call this public hearing close. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash eight?
Let's make a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash eight.
May I have a second?
A second.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. Greenwood to approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash eight, an ordinance amending chapter ten sixty of the Belburg municipal code to increase rates charged for refuse collection, was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, one more ordinance for a public hearing this evening. Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash nine. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash nine, an ordinance amending ordinances two thousand and seventeen dash fourteen and two thousand and eighteen dash five to adjust the city of Belburg appropriations for two thousand and eighteen, to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Belburg adopted the two thousand and eighteen annual budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduced costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. And whereas this ordinance is presented as an emergency to ensure that current budget authorizations are not exceeded. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby ordains, section one, that the two thousand and eighteen appropriation levels in several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. There's about thirteen lines or so of various funds. Two thousand and eighteen appropriations were seven-point-eight million dollars. There were adjustments in personnel services, other expenses, and total revisions of a hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one. And the now revised amended appropriations for two thousand and eighteen resulted in seven million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Section two, that this ordinance is presented as an emergency measure in order to guarantee that all budget line items maintain a sufficient level of appropriations to comply with state law. Section three, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And this is just to adjust to two thousand and eighteen for the end of the year.
Yes, so this is actually, this is a different ordinance. I had introduced the supplemental appropriations as two thousand and eighteen dash seven, and then I found in closing out all of the Upper Hillside stuff that the engineering was not folded in to that budget for the water capital improvement budget. So that was a pretty big difference. So that was sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five total that needed to be adjusted. The Upper Hillside project is closed out now, so we did have some savings in that additional amount that was dedicated to the Brackney contract, and then we had the extra that was happening with the engineering. So I needed to adjust that. So when I did that, a lot of these things were already on this worksheet. If you take a look at the supplemental appropriation worksheet, there were a couple of payouts, as well as there were some IT planning, court costs, things that were kind of last minute in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred that I went ahead and put in there. But like I said, there were some payout things with us losing administrative assistant finance. Some of the payout posting stuff was coming in later, and we had some pretty large payouts from losing some tenured staff this year. So I put a couple of extra things in here just in case to make sure that we're covered for the end of the year. So unfortunately, it does have to be an emergency because this is our last meeting of the year. So I wanted to make sure that I had everything squared away. So the Upper Hillside engineering piece was the real reason behind all of this. So there were just a few other things that I had added in just as a safety net for myself.
Any questions on council? This is a public hearing. Any inquiry questions from our audience? Seeing none, I'll call this public hearing close. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash nine?
I move that we approve ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash nine.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Who is?
McGill.
McGill.
Oh, sorry.
Darrell.
A motion was made by Mrs. Seager Lawson to approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash nine, an ordinance amending ordinances two thousand and seventeen dash fourteen and two thousand and eighteen dash five to adjust the city of Belburg appropriations for two thousand and eighteen, to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items and declaring an emergency, was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have no introductions of ordinances. We do have one resolution this evening, resolution two thousand and eighteen dash KK. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number two thousand and eighteen dash KK, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for two thousand and nineteen, where the city of Belburg has adopted its budget for two thousand and nineteen, and whereas a two thousand and nineteen budget will require the transfer of money among various funds, and whereas the Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven oh five, point one four, requires transfers of funds to be approved by city council. Now therefore, the city of Belburg hereby resolves, section one, that the transfer of funds be made by the city manager as follows. From the general fund to the capital improvement fund, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From the general fund to the police fund, a hundred thousand dollars, for total transfers of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Section two, that the fund transfer shown as specific line items are hereby approved from and after the effective date of this resolution, and may then be completed as determined by the city manager. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So this just ties in with our two thousand and nineteen budget. So there were only two budgets that needed to be, two funds that needed to be transferred to. Capital improvement and police typically, fire was in there, but with the passage of the levy, we did not have to do that for two thousand and nineteen.
Pretty standard stuff.
Yep.
So this is a resolution. Anyone have any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution two thousand and eighteen dash KK?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand and eighteen dash KK.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to adopt resolution two thousand and eighteen dash KK, a resolution authorizing transfers for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. It was seconded by Mr. Schwalter. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Schwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. That is all the resolutions and ordinances this evening. Uh, moving on to the city manager.
Okay, so Upper Hillside, as I said, is finished, and we received the final pay request from Brackney just on Friday. So the total cost of the project was one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and five cents. That did come in almost thirty thousand dollars less than all of the final authorized amounts from council for construction and engineering, so that's a good thing. So there was that buffer with Brackney, and that was a true buffer. We did come in less than that. We did receive the auditor of state award for the two thousand and seventeen financial audit, so it was, our financial reports were submitted in a timely manner, and the audit did not find anything, including a finding for recovery, material citations, weaknesses or deficiencies, or any questions, question cost. Woo, really struggling with that one tonight. Service foreman, so we had interviews for three applicants, and there was a panel that was, had representatives from the service department, fire, police, and our assistant to the manager. And Jerry Bergen, a longtime employee, was selected as the next service foreman. So actually, his first formal day as service foreman was today. So he's a very dedicated, longtime employee. Jerry's a great guy, and he's got a wealth of knowledge about this place, so I'm very, very pleased with that. So, I'm very, very pleased with that, and so is our service director. So, we have posted a vacancy for our next maintenance worker. So, we are accepting applications for that to bring us up to full staff with all of the backfilling that we've done. Fire department staffing. I actually think that they've brought on seven part-timers at this point. We had a flood of part-timers. So, I know that one of our firefighters, Joshua Lips, and another one, Stephen Lawrence, they just went out and just brought them in. So, this is amazing. I mean, our part-timers were just, you know, falling off left and right because it's such a hard position to kind of maintain. So, we are pretty fully staffed in the fire department right now. So, the part-time situation was a real, a real bright spot. So, hats off to the fire department and those firefighters that we're recruiting. Speaking of fire department, they are hosting a blood drive at Station 2 on December 29th. And, let's see, we've got a holiday luncheon this Friday, December 14th. So, one of the things that I wanted to implement was a holiday luncheon for all of our staff. So, I'm going to kind of shift around safety day so that they don't have one right on top of the other. So, I think it's really good for everybody to be able to get together and build, build team. So, that's something that we're going to do. So, that'll be this Friday. The snowflakes are back. So, that, that was a tough thing to have done, and I'm still, I'm still having a few issues with that, but we're good to go.
I noticed it pretty quick. I mean, we mentioned it at council meeting, and I want to say in the next day or two.
And, and it was done before Christmas in the park.
Yes.
Well, here's, here's the thing. So, Tuesday morning, I, the first call I made was to Ryan, service director. And I said, "Ryan, what is the deal with the snowflakes?" And he said, "We were just talking about that in the staff meeting. We wanted to know what was up with the snowflakes" because they wanted to put them back up. And I said, "Well, so what's the story?" And he said, "There is no story. Every, you know, every time we've had to hang them, we've had to look because maybe there's a bulb or two out." But, he said, "We've got plenty of bulbs. Can we put them up?" And I said, "Well, let me make sure I have all the proper things, you know, in place to be able to do that." And they went up. So, they're up. And they were just as excited to put them up as I was to tell them to do it, so.
They look great.
So, they're up.
We understood that they were falling apart and couldn't get replacement parts. That's why they didn't.
I think that might have been exaggerated.
Yeah, it sounds like it. So, I've had just so many positive comments.
Yeah. So, they're up, and they're here to stay.
Great.
Good.
Good to go. Other than that, this is the last meeting in December. We canceled the next one because it would be Christmas Eve. So, oh, and one last thing. Downtown beautification fund is being set up. So, I met with Green Giving about having a downtown beautification fund. What I plan to do with that is to do bike racks and benches downtown. So, I'm going to be selecting a couple of different options, take them before Village Review Board to let them be involved with that, with the selection of the final choices. And then I can submit a grant to Green Giving, and they'll buy the first ones. So, that would be a great Kickstarter to that campaign. That won't happen until March, that, that kind of approval, which gives us plenty of time to be able to find, find good options. So, that, that's, that's my intention, is to start that off. So, yeah, so that's going to be a 501(c)(3) donation, tax write-off that folks can make. So, I'm really excited to make that happen. The one thing that I do need, though, is I need to find two to four people that are not affiliated with the city that can be on that oversight board. So, if anybody knows of anybody that might be interested, or if anybody's interested, please let me know because that's the final part of setting this fund up, is giving them three to five names, and my name is going to be one of them, which means I need two to four additional people. So, if you're interested in being part of downtown beautification stuff, just let me know, and I would be happy to have you serve on that.
Oh, how, how would that be?
Louis waving his hand.
I know, I'll take him.
We're associated with the city. How does that?
No, she's talking to the public.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but if anybody on council knows of anybody that might be interested in serving in that capacity.
That's on the board?
Bring forward the name.
Is that on the Green Giving board?
It would be for, for this particular fund.
Just that one fund?
For downtown beautification.
Just the one fund?
Yep, just the one fund.
Hopefully, we can get someone who lives downtown.
That would be great. I've yet to do any formal outreach because this is all literally just happened within the last few days, so.
So, you're, you're going to actually apply for a grant from Green Giving?
Once I have our fund set up, then I will apply for a grant from Green Giving.
So, you're going to apply from the money you collect? Or you're going to apply for Green Giving funds?
Green Giving funds.
Outside of the, okay.
So, that would kickstart our campaign?
Yes.
They would put their name on the bike rack and the bench that we would be awarded a grant for, hopefully. And then people would be able to see that, and then they could sponsor a bench or a bike rack.
That's a good idea. So, this will be a component of Green Giving.
Yeah.
So, you have the board of directors, and you have the 300 components below. And each component will have, has to have a board set up.
Has their own board.
So, but she's going to request it through the board of directors to get the first grant that wouldn't be this pile of money.
Right.
And then that would get that going, and then someone would have to figure out a way to make that fund grow.
That's good.
Awesome.
That's it?
All right. Any questions for our city manager this evening?
The only question I got is the new service director, new service foreman. Can you drag him up and introduce him to us? I know they don't want to, but.
I can absolutely do that.
They're probably, well, they're probably not watching us, but yeah. They're going to blame you, Forrest.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to committee report service.
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
The only thing I have is I attended zoning workshop at Sinclair Friday. They have the, they have a little class called Planning, Zoning, Physics Guide, pot, poles, pistols, and human trafficking, and defensive zoning. The only thing I picked up on is the marijuana or pot issue is really still up in the air. So, the one thing I, as far as the police concerned, if you can't smoke it, it's still illegal that way. But, the state house and all the entities are still in kind of state of flux on exactly how it's going to shake out. And, of course, this was lawyers speaking with one another, and they wouldn't give you any definitive answers on what they. So, all I can tell you is that issue is still in a state of flux. And that's all I got.
Okay, safety, or finance and audit.
First one to thank city staff and congratulate them on the Auditor of State Award. I think this relates also to our former city manager, Mark Flockeck. I think we've gotten this award several times in a row. So, the bar's been set pretty high for the Melissa Dodd regime. So, let's continue the tradition.
Very good. Moving on, old business.
Oh, community affairs.
Community affairs. I just marked you off and didn't leave you.
And I have two things, actually. I attended the same zoning workshop, and there were some excellent workshops on complete street and street planning, and which is going to fall right into our comprehensive plan. So, we, I got some really good information and some good contacts to fill out what we want to do there. Well worth the time and money spent to attend. And we also had Christmas in the park on Saturday evening, which was very well attended. But, in conjunction with that, people, we had the city-owned historical museum open, serving cookies and hot chocolate. We had over 71 visitors come over to see the Christmas display and find out that, yes, we do have a lovely museum in Belbrook. So, I invite people to come in. It'll be open Wednesdays and Saturdays throughout December, and then close for January and February to get some work done inside, and then reopen in March. So, I'd invite folks to come in and see one of the treasures that your town has.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Now, we'll go on. Any old business? New business? I see one item on here, expiration of board members' terms. Board member terms.
That's actually going to be Pam. Yes, so I was kind of looking around at one of the duties of the clerk is to track the terms of the different board members, and when those terms are about to expire, to, you know, look to see whether those, the people holding those seats are eligible for another term. Some of the boards do have term limits. And so, there's some different situations going on with the, the people that their terms are coming up at an end soon. So, I wanted to bring that to council because one of the things that has to happen is if there are going to be open seats, they do need to be announced by council so that we can, can look to fill those.
Are any of these folks term limited?
So...
I'm looking at the names. I'm thinking not, but.
So, and I do apologize, I, you know, being new, I just started researching this situation. So, I was still going to do a little more. So, for both the planning board and the BZA, it does look like they, you're limited to two, five-year terms. Neither of the people who, whose terms are coming up have completed two terms. So, you know, we can ask them, or you can ask them if they would like to continue on for another term. I wasn't able to find for the Village Review Board. It says it's three-year terms, but I did not, I haven't yet found a limit to the number of terms you can have.
And the other ones, I believe, were appointed. So, those two were appointed. I think we just need to get a list together, and then, and then we'll talk to the committee and decide, and you can go through.
Since this is our last meeting, then, for the year? And we have two that are expiring at the end of this year? Do we need to do something?
Well, that, I don't know that we could, need to do it now. We'd need to do it prior to a meeting. So, let's say the committee, we would have to approve them on city council at some point. But, that's.
We also need to find out whether or not they want to serve again.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's more to it. So, the first.
And I, don't they have to be, even if they want to serve again, don't we have to?
Correct.
Advertise it? Or not?
No, no.
No. If they, if they're eligible for a second term, it does, yeah.
We would just go and inquire as to whether they desire to serve.
But, they still have to be sworn in and approved by council.
Yeah.
So, so I think, I think we, I think first, we need to get a good list, and then we need to figure out some of the other stuff with, with all the members. You know, so Ed's done. When's the plan, next planning board meeting?
It won't be until January.
So, hopefully, we'll have time to figure it out between there. Worst-case scenario, you might have, you have to set up interviews prior to that. Otherwise, you'll just won't have a board member. So, because they do have to be sworn in.
Yeah.
By, well, they have to be approved by city council, not sworn in by me.
Yeah.
So.
So, should we go ahead and put out correspondence to everybody saying, "These are the expirations. If you're interested in continuing, let Pam know"? How do we want to handle that?
I think we'll notify the people that are expiring this year.
Yeah, so notify them if they want to continue.
Well, anybody whose term's up, we should notify them if they're continuing some once, and then we can find out if they can or can't, and then we can go from there.
And then if they can't, or they don't wish to, then we can put something out.
Then you have to put it out there.
To solicit. Okay.
Yeah.
And then some of these that don't expire until, oh.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, it is January.
Right. I only, yeah.
I was thinking it was the end of 2019.
No. I only, I only put ones on here that are coming up.
Yeah, so, one is the 31st, the other's January, so there's a number of them.
Okay, gotcha. Just one in December, and then Mary's this records commission and appointments, so.
Right.
But, these are the end of January.